Let's get started. I don't know who has what in the pool of how long we'll be at this tonight, but let's see, let's get right down to work. I'm gonna, I hereby declare this meeting open and I call it to order. My name is Jay Tallerman. I am your town moderator. I declare that the warrant has been duly posted and published, and I hereby waive the reading of the warrant. Thanks again to everyone for all your patience as we continue to figure out how to do the town's business during what is still a lingering global pandemic, but mostly thank you for being here and doing that important business because we do have some work to do here tonight. Let me introduce some of the principals who you will be hearing from. To my immediate left is Carol Green, our town clerk. To her left is Todd Linmark, our finance director. We've got Kevin Calcutt, Anita Mecklenburg, and C.C. Van Tyne from the Select Board, Blythe Robinson, our intrepid town administrator. New to our community, we have Tom Harrington and Alex Rubin for town council, so everyone be on your best behavior. Let's impress them. Some of the basic rules for tonight. Our town meeting is governed by town meeting time generally, which is a treatise on parliamentary procedure. We have some local bylaws that also govern how we do a town meeting. Some of the parliamentary procedures can be thick. Please don't feel intimidated by any of them. If you have something you want to say or do as a citizen, we will help you say or do that within the bounds of those rules. I will explain procedures as needed. I will also respect requests for points of order. All motions will be made by the advisory board, which is directly in front of the stage. Our chair of the advisory board is Sue Klein. Sue, raise your hand and say hello to everybody. The advisory board will have the first turn at the mic in explaining what the article is, and then we will get into discussion, if there is any, on those articles afterwards. Motions and motions to amend must be in writing. Provided that for ministerial or typographical clerical correction, I'll accept a friendly amendment. Again, we'll help with procedures. We have two microphones at the front of the room. Please come down and say something if you have something to say. I'll try and balance discussion as best as we can. Masks pursuant to rules of the school are required at all times, even when you are at a microphone. The tech crew has done a great job preparing for this. We can hear you. Talk through your mask. Please respect the school's wishes and keep those masks on for the entire meeting. Everyone will have a chance to speak at the meeting, but at a certain point, I want to avoid repetition and may ask us to move along to new discussions. You have a max of five minutes the first time to the microphone, three minutes for a second time. I may allow a little extra if you're saying something particularly important. I may cut you off if you're getting repetitive. I may allow someone with new information to speak a third time, but I may also limit you to just two times. All comments and questions are through the moderator. Please, no conversations back and forth with anyone else. If I think it's important to engage a third person, I will ask if they have something to say. Please be civil. I want to have a good spirited debate where we need it, but I want no discussions about other people, no personal comments, and I want to hear your facts and your opinions. What I don't want to hear is what you think someone else's opinion is. So let's hear from you on what your position is. We have a number of local officials on the stage. Off to the, to my left or the right side, your right side of the auditorium, we have a number of other local officials as well who can answer technical questions if you have them. When debate is done on a motion, we will do a voice vote. I will ask for a show of hands if I can't tell what the outcome of that is. If I still can't tell, I may do a standing vote, and if I still can't tell, then we may have appoint some tellers and have them count the vote for us. If people feel I've counted wrongs, any seven members by standing can challenge my declaration of what the vote is. I do respect a call of the question or a motion to cut off debate. It requires a two-thirds vote. However, if it's premature and I think there's people standing at mics or still things to say, I may hold it in a balance on my own and will take it up after the remaining people still speak. There's another, there were a number of handouts. If you didn't get them, I think they were out in the hallway for a few of the articles. We're gonna have presentations up here. Pay attention to all of those. If you still have questions, obviously, we will try and get them answered. And that is about the whole of it from a procedural end, so we will get right into the articles. Article one is unpaid bills, and I think Mr. Siddiqui has the honor.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town appropriate the sum of $1,361.22 from the fiscal year 22 IT salary account to pay an unpaid prior bill from fiscal year 21 to the Town of Millis.
It's been moved and seconded. Mr. Siddiqui, explanation?
This article requests an authorization to pay the bills from the prior fiscal year. At the time the warrant was executed, there was an unpaid bill from the Town of Millis for fiscal year 21 for shared IT services.
Thank you. Any questions, comments on Article one? A payment of an unpaid prior year, or do you have a question or you're just getting to your, you're just getting your seat? Great. Pay, David Rosenberg?
My question is, when was that bill received?
Last fiscal year?
I was looking for a date in the last fiscal year, if possible.
I'm not sure why that, that's relevant. So if it's a last, if it's a bill of the prior fiscal year, they need special authority to pay it. I'm not.
I, I do understand that, but I'm curious as to how late in the fiscal year it was received.
Again, for our purposes of our vote here, I'm not sure it's relevant, so I think there's folks that you could talk to after the meeting on that if you need more detail. It is a payment of a bill from a prior fiscal year. It requires a nine-tenths majority vote. All those in favor, in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? It passes unanimously. Article two is a supplemental budget appropriation. Mr. Huff?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town transfer the sum of $3,000, uh, 350,000, $350,400, of which $263,400 is transferred from free cash and $95,000 is transferred from the fiscal 22 fire police.
The microphone is not clear, I'm sorry.
Okay, how about now?
Yeah, let's start from the top there, Mike.
For sure. Mr. Moderator, I move that the town transfer the sum of 358,000, or 350,000, $400,400, of which $263,400 is transferred from free cash and $95,000, $95,000 is transferred from the fiscal year 22 fire and police communications budget, with the sum of $200,000 to be transferred to the stabilization fund, $100,000 to be transferred to the OPEB trust fund, and the remainder to be added to the departmental budgets and appropriations for the current fiscal year as shown on the screen in the auditorium.
Is there a second? Mr. Huff, a little explanation, please.
The items require transfer of 350, $350,000, $400, there's adequate free cash available. The advisory committee believes that the budget items requested are appropriate for the town.
Thank you. And as you can see, the, the items in, in question are up on the screen here. Any questions, comments on Article two?
Can you explain what the O P E R trust fund is?
O P E B, OPEB. Ms. Robinson? I think your, your mic needs to be on, maybe.
Is that any better?
Nope.
Green light, there we go. OPEB stands for Other Post-Employment Benefits. In Massachusetts, that is referred to as retiree health insurance for any public employees who have met the requirements of receiving a pension from, through the county that they work in. The town is responsible for, at present, 35% of those, excuse me, 65% of those costs for any of those employees when they leave through their lifetime.
Any other questions, comments?
Hi, my name's Anthony Kennedy. I just had a question concerning the stabilization fund. I was wondering how the $200,000 was arrived at, recognizing that there was substantial free cash available. $200,000 doesn't seem like very much.
Ms. Robinson?
Mr. Moderator, we gave that a lot of thought this year because free cash is higher than it has been in, in the town's history, but we're trying to take a, a moderate approach to all of the things that we're funding, and our, our plan was to spend approximately half of the free cash that we have this year, saving the other half for things that will come up during the winter and thinking ahead to expenses that will come up in the following fiscal year. So we decided, myself and the finance director together, made the decision that increasing it to 200,000 would get the balance to just over $2 million and get very close to 5% of the town's annual operating budget, which is considered a best practice.
Okay, so.
Do you have a, you have a follow-up?
I do, yeah.
Again, I don't want to have conversation.
I was just wondering, what, what is the 5% target? What is the dollar amount, the 5% that you envision?
I'm gonna defer that question to Mr. Linmark.
Todd, you need to. I think he'll just go there. So currently with the excluded debt not included in the budget, the 5% mark would be 2,106,000. With the excluded debt, we need to have 2,240,000. Putting the 200,000 into the account now would bring us to 2,500,000, which is about 4.7%, 4.7% overall.
Okay. And if someone could just explain to the group just what the stabilization fund is and, you know.
So why don't, instead of you asking, I mean, this is, I, I'm respectful of that, but again, this is to ask questions about these articles.
Okay.
So I will state for the benefit of the, the body that the stabilization fund is generally the town's rainy day fund, where we put money aside. Having a good balance looks good for us in terms of our, our bond rating, but that's our rainy day fund where we put it out. It's harder to take money out of that, which kind of corresponds with our town administrator's comments about still keeping money along with free cash where it's easier for town meeting to appropriate. So there's a little bit of an explanation, but.
Right, no, I appreciate that, I think.
I want to keep conversation to the articles. I have no problem helping educate folks, but this is the place to talk about these articles.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any further comments? Sir, come on down. Tell us your name.
Yes, sir.
What your, what street you live on.
Good evening, Ken Gallo. I live on Wampanoag Avenue. I just had a quick question. It's twofold. Can you explain the confirmed quantity of thermal imaging camera? I just want to make sure it's not plural. And secondly, what is the purpose of the thermal imaging camera?
Mr. Moderator, this is for one thermal imaging camera, and I would respectfully request that the fire chief be able to answer the question about his purpose.
Chief, always happy to hear from you. Why don't you step up to the mic?
All right. Thermal imaging camera is a device that we use when we are doing search and rescue, but also when we're doing overhaul in structure fire situations. We also use them for hazmat situations. You can actually tell the level of fluid or gases in a tank because there's a variance in temperature where the liquid level is or the gas level is. So it's, it's a tool that we use pretty much almost every day. Every fire alarm we have, multiple types of responses, we use those devices on a regular basis. So that's what that device is used for. It allows us to see surface temperatures and to more effectively do search and rescue. And also, we, from time to time, are called upon to assist the police too when maybe a suspect or there's a lost person in the dark, things like that. It allows us to have better vision and to see, you know, a heat signature of either a victim or hidden file.
Okay, that clarified it well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions, comments on Article two? Seeing none requires a majority vote. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? It passes unanimously. Article three, capital expenditures through borrowing. Mr. Huff?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town borrow the sum of $980,000 to fund the capital expenditures as printed in the warrant and shown on the screen in the auditorium.
Second, any explanation here?
The, the advisory committee views the replacement of these capital items as appropriate maintenance expenditures for the town, and the debt is appropriate to finance a purchase.
Thank you. Any questions, comments?
Yes, Mr. Moderator, Christopher Weider, 64 Cleveland Street. Was there any analysis done on the fire department tanker truck as to the repair of the existing tanker truck versus the cost of a new one? And if the new one is required, what is going to happen to the old tanker truck?
I don't know who's best, Blythe or, or Chief?
I would, I think the chief can best answer the questions about the status of the truck and why it should be replaced rather than repaired.
Chief?
All right. So our tanker is 33 years old, which puts it 13 years past its service life according to NFPA consensus standards. So in essence, that vehicle is currently a rolling liability for the town. We have done extensive work over the, the course and life of that vehicle. That vehicle has served the town very well for 33 years. There, it is just at the end of its service life. From a cosmetic standpoint, looking at the shell of it, it looks okay. When you get underneath it, there's body rot, compartments are falling apart. The pump has had to be repaired multiple times. Right now, it's, our DPW mechanic has done a good job at just kind of making it serviceable, but there are valves that constantly leak, there are valves that are not operational, and, you know, it is a old and antiquated piece of equipment. So it, the service life is, is done. From an analysis standpoint, there, there's no parts available for it for the most part. Everything that's being done to it to keep it on the road is kind of customized work, which makes it more expensive. And then from the standpoint of what we will do with it when it is done, it will be available for the town to auction, and those funds would be, I assume, would be placed in a general fund, you know, when, when the, whoever wants to buy it, buys it.
Thank you. Tom, why don't you introduce yourself?
Hi, I'm Tom Sklins. I'm 253 Main Street. I lived here almost 26 years in town. Just have a question about what's gonna happen to Engine Two. That's an '07 Emergency One Typhoon Pumper. That's getting really old. I know the chief was mentioning about it, and by something fiscal year 2020, 2027 it'd be replaced, because that's getting really old, has been a lot of problems. Also Squad One needs to replace the '07, and what about the ladder truck? That's a '96.
So Chief, if you could help answer Tom's questions, that would be great. I know that you have a lengthy list of things you'd like to do with these trucks.
So, as you indicated, we, we do have Engine Two, which is kind of our primary workhorse, which is, does have a lot of wear and tear, and, but it is still very much serviceable. And as you indicated, it still has a number of years left on its, you know, recommended service life. We continue to evaluate that vehicle and whether it needs to be replaced and when it needs to be replaced. It was, the decision was made this year that we can continue to use it as our first-out vehicle that is still serviceable and still running.
Yeah.
The ladder truck also, that is a high priority for us. It is one that has also surpassed its NFPA service life, but also is a very expensive piece of equipment, and we're constantly doing the cost-benefit analysis to determine, you know, when's the best time to replace that. Right now, that vehicle is still servicing us well, and it, it meets the needs of the town, but it is, you know, it is an area of concern, which we will look to address in future fiscal years. But right now, you know, from a priority standpoint, the most important thing was the tanker truck, which is, you know, a very important piece of apparatus for our department. And, you know, that's the one that, that we felt like was the highest priority to have replaced, so we continue to serve the town in the way that we do.
Yeah.
Thanks. Tom, you have any follow-up questions?
Yeah, my last question is about the fire station placement, because I know that Millis has a new one, and Walpole, Medfield does too, and then Plainville and downtown Franklin, South Franklin, and King Street.
So who, who can answer? Anyone have any, Blythe?
I would, as you know, Mr. Moderator, there is a committee report under Article Five, and the chairman of the committee is gonna give some brief remarks, so maybe that's a great time to.
Great. So Tom, after, right, if you can stick around for Article Five, we're gonna have a little report on that.
Yep, thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Any other comments on Article Three, some borrowing for some capital? Sir, introduce yourself, your street, your name?
Mr. Moderator, my name is Ed Headad, Red Maple Run. I guess I, I don't think I heard an answer to Mr. Weider's question when he said about the disposition. Is there a residual value on the vehicles? If not, what happens to the vehicles during this process, assuming that we do buy new ones? What happens to the old vehicles? Is there a value that comes in? Is there a trade-in? That kind of thing.
Ms. Robinson can answer. I, I do believe, I think at the annual, we, we give a little authority for them to dispose of these kinds of items, but if she has some, can add some work loss to that, that would be great.
So, yes, Mr. Moderator, we use an auction website that is popular for municipal vehicles, where we will put up vehicles that have either old police cars or tanker truck or whatever. We do some research to determine a value that we think is appropriate in the marketplace, and people can bid on them. The highest bidder wins, and they also pay, the bidder also pays the cost of running the auction for that item, so there's no out-of-pocket cost to the town, and all the funds go into the town's general fund.
So I, I guess I presume that there's no trade-in value right off the bat that you would, would.
There are times when there's a vehicle, Mr. Moderator, that is, the trade-in is a better option, and we do study that. It's just not in every case. It's a case-by-case basis.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ed. Any other questions, comments on Article Three? Seeing none, this is, requires borrowing, so it requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of Article Three, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? It passes unanimously. Article Four is some capital expenditures that don't require borrowing. Mr. Huff?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town transfer the sum of $1,326,000, of which $1,246,000 is transferred from free cash, and $80,000 is transferred from ambulance receipts reserved to fund the capital expenditures as shown on the screen in the auditorium.
And there's a lengthy list there. Is there a second? Any explanation here?
Yes. The items require transfer of $1,246,000 from the town's free cash and $105,000 from the, from other sources, including state grants and ambulance receipts. There's adequate free cash available. The advisory committee believes that the capital items requested are appropriate for the town.
Excellent. Any questions, comments on any of the items you see up there on the screen? Mr. Weider?
Yes, Mr. Moderator, could we get an explanation as to why the facilities department needs a new 350 truck? I guess with the DPW and the fact that they only need to move vehicles every once in a while with the trailer, I find that pretty frivolous expenditure. Could we get an explanation of that?
Okay. Anyone, Ms. Robinson?
Mr. Moderator, I, I'd like to start with that answer, and, but first, I'd like to just make one comment. There was a handout tonight in the, as you came in the auditorium, called the Town of Norfolk Digital Capital Budget Book. This is some excerpt pages from our new digital budget book, which is available on our website, and the pages that are included are ones that show all the requests made in FY '22. Any of the items you see highlighted in yellow are ones that are funded are whole or in part in this article and the one previously. I would point out that in some cases, the funding for an item is different on the screen than it is in the book, and this is an example of that. The request was for a new truck at $75,000. We have chosen to propose a used truck for $55,000. This truck is many years old. It was actually transferred over from Public Works, I think about three years ago, when it had, really had finished its service life there, and is used by the facilities department to pull a trailer, move equipment and materials from various buildings, including schools. And it, and like the tanker truck, it is also in very poor condition and would not pass a inspection and should not be on the road any longer. So since it doesn't have as heavy a use as other, other equipment, our plan is to seek out a used one. I realize that market is tough right now, but we're gonna look for that so that we can continue to do that work as needed. I know the facilities director is here. If there are any other specific questions that I, I can't answer.
Let's, Tom, you have a question on this article?
Yeah, two questions. The, the DPW vehicle, the H5, that needs to be replaced, it's a 1997. That's the H5 that needs to be replaced. Also, road repairs, like Park Street, I was, my good friend Barry, when he took Bob McGee's place, he and I have been talking a lot recently about roads and all that kind of stuff. Park Street being replaced and new sidewalk and bridge on, by the train of the Lawrence Hoyum Oil Ridge, that bridge is 34 years old and its sidewalk is cracked, and that needs to be repaired, and old mill and standardish. Last question is about the police vehicles being replaced. I know the N1s are 14, and N5 has one Explorer, but the two Toruses need to go on the old Explorer, which is the N9, the 13.
So, mentioned a few things there. Anyone give us any summary or provide any further information that would help answer Tom's questions? Or, Tom, are you making more comments, or you want the status of those vehicles?
Status of those vehicles, and a question for Barry if he's looking, if he's not, maybe wait until next year's town meeting. Thank you.
If there's anyone that can give a pretty concise summary of any of this, that would be great.
I can start, Mr. Moderator, with the police cars. There are three of them. The, two of the cruisers are about 120, 130,000 miles each, so really past where they should be in, included in the police department's fleet. We will be recycling those downwards and replacing older cars that are being used by facilities or building department and, and getting rid of cars that have larger issues and probably auctioning those off. To the question about the DPW truck, I think that was covered under Article Three as a borrowing. We will be auctioning that truck off. I think the 97 is what Tom was referring to. Last year, we, I think we auctioned off a sister truck, if I remember correctly, and I think we got $600 for it. So we're not expecting it to be a budget-solving measure, I would say.
Okay. Okay.
I apologize if I, if I left out any details that Tom was looking for.
No, thank you very much for the information. Chris, you have a follow-up question to your earlier question?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. It's a little difficult to hear, so I might not have heard the TA correctly. Did she say that the F-350 currently used by the maintenance department is no longer in use? And if so, is there any reason why the facility department cannot use economies of scales with the DPW and use a DPW truck if and when they require to remove equipment, such as their trailer, or anything else?
Mr. Moderator, they do occasionally use a Public Works truck, but the truck that they might use with a lift gate is, is needed for, in the wintertime by DPW, so not available to facilities. While we do share often, we have done a lot of that with having trouble this year, like lots of communities not being able to get parts for things, and having things be, need to be repaired and take a long time. Facility still does have a job to do, and things they need to move around, and that's why we're proposing a used truck rather than a new truck, to keep them able to do that when they need to.
Thank you.
Want to do a follow-up, Mr. Moderator?
For a third time, it better be something brand-new, not just argument over these things. I don't want to hear any more argument over the.
Just ask him a question, Mr. Moderator.
I know, but this is your third time.
I'd like to make a motion to, I'd like to make an amendment to the motion to remove the F-350 truck from the facility proposed capital budget.
Is there a second to that motion? Mr. Rosenberg has seconded it. So there's been a motion. Do you have that in writing? You're going to need to put that in writing for Ms. Green. So there is a motion and a second for removal of the F-350 truck, and I can't see the numbers up there. So 55, so that would reduce this by 55,000. Does anyone want to discuss? This motion to amend will require a simple majority vote. Any further discussion on this? Seeing none, we will vote on the amendment. If you want to remove that item from the capital needs and capital article here, you will vote aye. If you want to leave the article as it is, unchanged, you will vote no. All those in favor of the amendment, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Okay, it, the motion to amend fails, and we are back to the main article. Any further questions? Okay. So we are back to the original article, requires a simple majority vote. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, no?
Aye.
Or no? So it passes by the clear majority. Article Four, Article Five Committee Reports. We have three reports that we're going to hear from tonight. The first is from Select Board Member Calcutt, I believe.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Tonight, I share a committee report from the Norfolk County Advisory Board. On March 10th, President Biden signed the $1.9 trillion American Rescue Plan Act. This law provides for billions of dollars to be distributed directly to every state, county, city, and town in the country. On May 10th, the U.S. Treasury launched a $350 billion coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds program, created under the American Rescue Plan Act, and promulgated an interim final rule to guide distribution of these funds. Massachusetts state government will receive 5.3 billion in these funds. The town of Norfolk is receiving 1.25 million in coronavirus funds, and Norfolk County is receiving 137 million in coronavirus funds, and up to an additional 2.26 million is available to our town in grant funding from Norfolk County, after their 3% administration and county project holdback is deducted. All told by next year, Norfolk will have access of up to 3.47 million in federal grant funding for local projects. These funds are being distributed in two batches, one year apart, and the first batch of funding is already in the town's possession. Norfolk County has developed a program with other Massachusetts counties to distribute the preponderance of their grant award to constituent communities. Norfolk County holds about two-thirds of the funds available to our town, and their program has a multi-tiered approval process to make sure that funds are released and they are permissible according to 150 pages of federal guidance. It's important to note that these funds will need to be applied for one of the following four broad purposes. Addressing the public, the public health emergency and/or the negative impacts of the pandemic. Premium pay for private or public essential workers. Revenue loss due to the pandemic. And investment in water, sewer, or broadband infrastructure. The funds cannot be used to restore stabilization funds or pension funds, debt service, borrowing costs, or as a match for other federal grants. Almost all uses must be forward-looking beginning on March 3rd, 2021. The funds must be obligated by December 31st, 2024, and spent by December 31st, 2026. What this means for our community is principally that we will have a tremendous amount of time to carefully and strategically think about what projects we wish to put forward together. For example, one of the first uses Norfolk will leverage will be to rebuild and modernize one of our core communication mediums to the community, which is our town website. We are, we also should be aware that the Federal Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act that recently passed through Congress could see additional money for similar projects available to Norfolk in the coming months. We'll be discussing potential projects, prioritization, and planning for the foreseeable future, but if you have any questions, please feel free to reach out to the Select Board or the Town Administrator's Office. Thank you so much.
Next, I believe we have Andy Bakanowski going to talk for the Energy Committee, see what they're up to lately.
Still working? Good. Andy Bakanowski, Nagatake Avenue. So last time I was up here was about two years ago. We, as you know, we are a green community. We received about $144,000 two years ago, and we've completed work, mostly lighting in some of the school buildings, some work at the DPW buildings, some insulation, ceiling, and that work was completed in April of this year. Projected annual savings to the town is about $39,000. All that work was done without any taxpayer money, so that's a good thing. We're now on to our second phase of, the second round of, of grant money, and it's about $141,000 we applied for. Chris Chand, who is here, is the architect, mastermind behind that, that work, that application. And he, I'm going to give him a round of applause, because, believe me, he did everything. So anyways, the, the projected savings is about $19,000. Unfortunately, it's lower than the other ones, because this is more systems-related stuff, management system stuff, and it's part of the bigger plan. As the buildings become more electrified, they will, we'll see more savings in the future. I want to take a pause here for a second about, talking about the future. Larry Sullivan, who is a recent member, who, we burned him out, I'll be honest with you. This is not, this is not an easy committee to be on, I'll be honest with you, was instrumental in getting and working on that $141,000. Worked with Matt Hafner, and Matt's going to get a round of applause from me as well. And if you don't know what Matt does every day, I, I'm going to tell you that, you know, he, what he does is pretty amazing, just because he's figured out the rebate stuff, he's managed all the construction work, did his normal responsibilities, and we also talk about things that, you know, for the future, I may not 100% remember that stuff, but at least I know that's part of the big plan, so. And while I'm up here, two years ago, I said that we're going to have to start funding studies to do larger energy projects, and we're at that point now, where probably in the spring, we'll be coming back with a request for pulling, pulling together an engineering study for the heating system, HVAC system at the town hall. And if you have been following things, I guess it's been three or four years, about the gas line being possibly brought up to the town hall, you know, that was around a quarter million dollars. Are there other things we can do that needs to be updated? So there's a lot of information that needs to be updated and brought into, into line with where we want to go with the, improving the, the energy efficiency of the town hall. One of the interesting things that, a couple weeks ago, I was on a, on a conference call with the Department of Energy, is that the, the government will be providing large grants for removing fossil fuel equipment. So alternative energies such as geothermal will need to be looked at. Gas is still a fossil fuel, natural gas is still a fossil fuel, but the money is out there. So, you know, this is something that we're going to have to do. We're still in the planning stages. We got to get the next round of sampling, excuse me, next round of grant applications approved, and get that work started, but we'll be coming back in the, in the spring for some sort of funding. I'd like to say with the $39,000 that we are going to be saving from the first round of green community stuff, the $19,000 for the second round, you know, we've pretty much have paid about, we've, we've pretty much have paid for a good portion of a study through the savings, so I'd ask that you think about that, and when we consider this. So I think that's about it. Oh, I'm sorry, thank you, David, thank you, David. During town meeting in the spring, we did talk about municipal aggregation, and if you remember, we did receive one bid. We've had some recent discussions with, with the town administrator, and there, she's going to reach out to a couple other vendors. We only did receive one, we'd received one response, and the, we want to see if we can get some additional competition as well as a different, from a different vendors that life is, is familiar with. I'm, did we decide on one or two? I forgot. Two, okay. So a little more competition. Realistically, this would not take effect for, at least for another year, just because the review by the Department of Public Utilities will take at least that long to get, get us to that point, so. And I think that's all I have.
Thank you, Andy.
Okay. Did I, less than 10 minutes?
Not too bad for you. I think we have a report on the fire station. Who's providing us with that report? Come on down.
Is it, is this working?
I think it is.
Okay. Kevin Champagne, Seneca Street. I am the chairperson of the Fire Station Building Committee. I don't think I have as quite a long an update as the previous two. We've just kind of get, getting started, but we were formed back in February. As I'm sure many people here know, renovation or replacement of the fire station was supposed to be part of the previous public safety project. Unfortunately, there were insufficient funds when the, when the, when the police station was finished to really properly do the fire station. But we were fortunate that we had enough money left over to kind of restart the process, get an OPM on board, get an architect on board, restart the feasibility study to see what can be done with the, with the fire station. So to kind of get you a little up to date, we've, we've hired an OPM, Vertex Companies is our owner's project manager, and then recently, we've hired a architect, Doran Whittier, who very experienced in public safety projects and fire stations. In fact, they did the, the public safety building in nearby Medfield, if anybody wants to see their work. We've, as I mentioned, we're, we're really just kind of getting started. Architect has started their feasibility study. We actually had our first community meeting last Wednesday. I know I saw some of you there, where people were able to have a tour of the fire station, where you can kind of see what the, what the chief and his staff are up against, and why this project is such a, such a dire need. We do have future community events planned as the, as the design process continues, so hopefully see more of you there. We expect to have the feasibility report done in December, and then shortly thereafter, make a decision whether it's renovate, add-on, or replace the fire station, and then, and then move into design, and hopefully be back in a, in a year or so with a, with a decision to kind of put in front of the town, so.
Thank you very much. Okay, those are the three reports that were scheduled. We are now moving on to Article Six, which regards Mirror Lake Preservation. Ms. Moore?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town transfer from the Community Preservation Fund $20,000. $10,000 from the Open Space and Recreation Reserve, and $10,000 from the Undesignated Fund for a five-year weed control program to restore 10 acres of Mirror Lake within the town.
Is there a second? Any explanation from advisory?
Thank you. The vote was eight approved and one not approved. Mirror Lake lies partially in Rantham and partially in Norfolk. The pond is owned by Norfolk and maintained by Norfolk DPW. In Rantham this year, they went from treating 10 or less acres a year to almost 30 acres this year. Funds were raised by community members. There's a publicly accessible part of the lake in Norfolk. This year, there was a severe outbreak of curly leaf pond weed on the Norfolk side of the lake, which prompted this request. Curly leaf pond weed grows from the bottom in early spring and can reach up to five feet tall. Diquat is the treatment. It burns the leaves, and they drop to the bottom. Seeds are spread through nodules that drop to the bottom and overwinter. Treatment is best done in early spring, when the weeds are just starting to grow aggressively. Diquat is renowned for being environmentally safe for wildlife and swimmers, et cetera. The company would seek additional approvals from the Conservation Committee, Commission, regarding the use of this chemical. Treatment with diquat requires a three-to-five-year plan. The company assesses each year how much of the lake needs to be treated, so costs can be variable year to year. Likely, since the weeds were so dense this year, we will need substantial treatment next year. If we can control the weeds next year, then following years will require less treatment. The funding requested here covers up to five years of treatment. The same company is treating Highland Lake and Norfolk, and that treatment has been successful as approved on the town warrant a few years ago. The company being used on the Rantham side has a cost per day, which reduces costs for Norfolk, as days can be shared between Rantham and Norfolk. Additional annual budgets will be requested at subsequent town meetings. The majority of advisory committee supports this article. The one vote not to approve voted due to a philosophical disagreement with the town paying to treat what is a largely residential body of water. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions on Article Six? Seeing none, this requires a majority vote. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, say no?
No.
It passes by a clear majority. Article Seven, Ms. Klein, Cemetery Maintenance Appropriation.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town appropriate the sum of $25,000 from the Cemetery Perpetual Care Fund to fund engineering and development of additional burial plots at the Norfolk Cemetery, including expenses incidental related thereto.
It's been moved and seconded. Any explanation from advisory?
Yes, this, this article is to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer any available source of money to fund the engineering and development of additional burial plots at the Norfolk Cemetery, including expenses related to. The cemetery is nearing capacity, and this will ensure that town residents will continue to have an eternal home in this town. The funding for developing a section of the cemetery to add 100 additional plots is in the Cemetery Perpetual Care account, and is not new money to be raised.
Thank you. Mr. Rosenberg?
Thank you, David Rosenberg, Norfolk Street. What is the number of burial plots currently in use in the cemetery, and how many remaining burial plots are available in the cemetery now?
Mr. Moderator, I would defer to the Assistant DPW Director.
Certainly.
Who I know has those facts at, at his fingertips.
Absolutely, I do. In the main section of the cemetery.
Can you introduce yourself to us?
Barry LaRiviere, Assistant DPW Director, Town of Norfolk. Currently, in the main section of the cemetery, there's 42 existing lots, and the veteran section, we have 145. The expansion at the rear of the cemetery we're looking at could get us anywhere from 100 to 120 more spaces for the future.
Mr. Rosenberg, you have a follow-up question there?
Yeah, I didn't fully understand the answer. I heard what I thought was the number of available plots in the existing cemetery. I didn't understand if you said how many are currently, how many plots currently have bodies buried in them in the cemetery?
I don't, I don't have that number up the top of my head. We can definitely research that and get back to you. The main focus right now is I have 42 available, and the general section. Uh, the main focus right now is I have 42 available, uh, and the general section, and 145 available in the vet section.
Uh, morbid fascination notwithstanding, I'm sure you'd be happy to answer Mr. Rosenberg's question at another time. Any other questions, comments on this article? Take your time, Peter.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Peter Diamond, 84 Seccong Street, Norfolk. In Article Three, one of the highlighted items in Article Three was cemetery expansion for 25,000. So my question is, is this Article Seven in addition, an additional amount of money over and above what was appropriated in Article Three?
Article Three was capital from borrowing.
I'm sorry, Article Four. Page eight.
Uh, page eight of the, uh, the capital handout?
Yes.
I think that might be for information purposes. I don't believe that was on the list for Article Four capital that we showed on the screen. So, correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Robinson?
You're correct, Mr. Moderator. The Article Four list is, is on the screen again. The information in the budget handbook is simply information, is information...
More of a larger compendium of...
Correct.
...of all your stuff.
Yes.
So, these were the things that were voted on Article Four, Peter? So, thank you for the clarification, though. That's really helpful. Any other questions, comments on Article Seven? You rising for a question, or are you just anticipating? No, you, no, 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 no. Requires a majority vote. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed say no? It passes unanimously. Article Eight, we have a roadway acceptance. Ms. Klein?
Sorry about that. I was just trying to speed things along.
Don't, don't be. I know you probably have somewhere to go, but...
My glasses fogged up now. Mr. Moderator, I move that the town accept Frederickson Road Extension and Oakview Trail Extension as public ways as laid out by the Select Board, and further to authorize the Select Board to accept in any, to accept in fee, interest easement, and a, in and upon such ways execute any documents in connection therewithin.
Appertnances, I believe?
Yeah.
Is that word there? Do we have a second? Any explanation from advisory?
The Advisory Committee recommends approval of this article. Article Eight is road acceptance. This is, the road has recently been completed and is now ready to be turned over to the town. There is no cost for the town to accept these roads.
Questions, comments on this roadway acceptance? I assume it meets the, Mr. Byron, the Planning Board's approval. You're satisfied that the work's been done? You can just give me a thumbs up if, if that'll do. I get a thumbs up from the Planning Board there on that. This requires a simple majority vote. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, no? It passes unanimously. Article Nine, lease of land. Mr. Lutz. Somewhat lengthy motion. Please bear with Mr. Lutz.
I get them all. I move that the town authorize the Select Board to take the following actions with respect to a ground-mounted solar facility project at 12 Sharon Ave, uh, to authorize the Select Board to lease approximately 4.6 acres, plus or minus, of a portion of town-owned land located at 12 Sharon Avenue for a maximum of 35 years, upon such terms and condiction, conditions that are, are acceptable to the Select Board, to a solar energy provider for the purposes of constructing, maintaining, and operating a ground-mounted solar facility on the property, and to enter into a power purchase agreement and/or to negotiate and execute a pilot, which is a payment in lieu of taxes agreement, with the solar energy provider. To, uh, number two, to authorize the Select Board to accept easements over any access roadway constructed over abutting properties for emergency vehicle access to the ground-mounted solar facility project. Number three, to authorize the Select Board to grant an easement to a public utility provider to install, maintain, operate, repair, reinstall, or replace any utilities required for interconnection to the ground-mounted solar facility project.
Any second? It's been moved and seconded. Uh, explanation from advisory?
Article Nine would authorize the town to lease approximately 4.7 acres near the town's water tower on Sharon Avenue to allow for the installation of a solar photovoltaic field. Uh, in exchange, the town will receive a number of material benefits, including rent for the land and an access road from Sharon Street to Pond Street. In addition, the town will receive a reduced rate in electricity for its town buildings. The committee believes that this is a sensible use of town land that will provide benefits to the town and to its residents.
And do we have as a slide available, a picture of where this is? Is that possible for us to put up there?
Sure. I need to just close this.
While she's getting to, while she's getting to that, um, this would be helpful. Mr. Rosenberg, you want to rise for a question or a comment?
Um, yes. I have a concern about the, um, power purchase agreement, um, at the end of, uh, Section One of the article. Um, my understanding is that when we, um, had a similar arrangement with, uh, solar panels over the, uh, old landfill, we entered into a power, uh, purchase agreement that, um, obligated us to purchase power at a fixed price that initially was lower than the going rate, but in fact, over time, we were paying more, uh, for the power under the power purchase agreement than we would have if we didn't have such an agreement. And my question is, can it be arranged that the power purchase agreement, um, gives us the option of purchasing power at the agreed rate, rather than the obligation to do that? So that if the rate, so if we can buy power less expensively elsewhere, we're not obligated to pay more?
Well, that's a little out there in front of us, but if Ms. Robinson can provide any, uh, highlights as to where we may be going, uh, with, uh, negotiations, I'm, I'm happy to have her speak to it.
Uh, Mr. Moderator, we haven't made any final decisions. We wanted to, as to whether to enter into a power purchase agreement or not. We've simply asking town meeting's approval latitude to, for all the options that we may need to consider, uh, for the proposal that we've received.
Thank you. And Mr. Rosenberg, I'll state anecdotally that your, your comments, an astute one. I, as you know, I represent a number of communities. The power purchase agreements that communities are negotiating are, uh, an evolving animal, and towns are seeking to make sure that they get the most of them. And I, I expect that they will. I asked, by the way, Matt, I'll get to you in a second, I asked, by the way, that this be put up. When I first heard of this article, anyone that, um, enjoys walking over in Lynn Farm, or the Rantham side of that property, or riding their bike, or their, their horses, or walking their dog, or whatever, I was curious as if it, uh, whether or not it touched on any of those, um, really lovely trails. And, um, I was provided with this, and it, uh, the indication is that it does not. Um, any, Matt, do you, you have something to add to this discussion?
One.
Briefly?
Matt Hafner, Director of Facilities. And Mr. Rosenberg, we're doing wonderful with that field. We are buying energy for significantly less than we have a, a contract for. That field's been paying dividends. Um, it's been a blessing for the town.
Great. Thank you for the information, Matt. Ed, you have, have a comment or a question?
I just have a que, a clarification, 'cause when the Advisory Board's justification spoke about, there is a justification for reduced rates for energy, and then, um, Lite's comment that they haven't decided whether or not they're going to have a energy purchase plan as part of this. I guess I'm confused, but there seems like a contradiction there in, in the two statements. Can we have a clarification, please?
Not sure I, I see a contradiction, but Ms. Robinson, if you have any clarification there, I'd be happy to have you share it.
Yes, let me just get to the... So, Mr. Moderator, I've put on the screen, uh, some of the benefits that, that we, um, expect to receive from this, just because I thought the, the slide might be helpful. We're not necessarily planning to purchase power from this for the town. We will, the proposal from the, the, um, the entity was that we at least receive a discount, uh, as you see on the screen, for any energy, uh, that the town uses because we have this So, I, I, I'm not sure if that helps your, with an answer or not, but, um, it's, that's why we're, it's not sure exactly what the final agreement will be.
I guess it's, well, I guess it's, that is a clarification, because I guess you're getting a reduced rate of, of energy you're already purchasing. I guess it was just, I guess it was just not clear the way it was a reduced rate on electric for its own building. I guess that's, that's clear. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think some of the clear, um, Mr. Moderator, some of the, what we believe are the, are the benefits are annual rent from the land with an escalation each year, uh, a personal property tax for the value, on the value of the array, or a pilot agreement. We need to work that out as well. The road getting us, the, the police department more swiftly to Pond Street for emergencies than they can today, and the discount. But I say, we didn't, we haven't reached any final agreements, because we wanted to make sure town meeting was comfortable with this before we got to that point with the, uh, firm.
I guess just if, if, Mr. Moderator, if I could just ask, if there's, if there's a range of an idea of what kind of a reduced rate you might be thinking in your head that you might be able to anticipate?
I, I never like to invite conjecture, Ed. I'm, I'm sure they're gonna be hard at work on it, and I...
Yeah, okay.
I invite you to stay in touch with the town administration as they get through it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions on Article Nine, a lease of land? Requires a two-thirds vote, because it is a lease of land. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed say no? It passes unanimously. Article Ten, a lease of, uh, roof, and I believe a parking lot. Mr. Lutz?
Mr. Moderator, I, I move that the town authorize the Select Board to lease all or a portion of the roof and a portion of the parking lot of the police station located at 14 Sharon Ave for a term of up to 20 years, upon such terms and conditions are acceptable to the Select Board, to a solar energy provider for the purposes of constructing, maintaining, and operating a solar facility on the property, and enter into a power purchase agreement and/or to negotiate and execute a payment in lieu of taxes, uh, agreement with the solar energy provider, and further to authorize the Select Board to grant an easement to Eversource to install, maintain, operate, repair, reinstall, or replace any utilities required for interconnection to the solar facility project.
Is there a second? Explanation by advisory, Mr. Lutz?
Article Ten would authorize the town to enter into a power purchase agreement, or as, as the article says, a pilot agreement, with a solar energy company that would construct a solar photovoltaic array on the roof of the police station and a solar canopy array on a portion of the parking lot. The town would potentially receive a reduced rate on the energy produced by the solar PV system. In addition, the canopy would provide some coverage for police vehicles that are parked underneath it, which would reduce response time for these vehicles during adverse weather conditions. The Advisory Committee believes that this is a sensible use of town property and provides other benefits beyond the generation of solar energy for the town.
Can we put up that slide that has kinda the bullet point benefits for this? Here we go. Any questions, comments? Mr. Rosenberg?
Um, I have the same comment about this article as I did about the previous one. I won't repeat the comment unless somebody wants me to, but please apply it to this article also. Thank you.
Excellent. So we will not repeat our response, but, uh, they'll be hard at work, um, on, on this one. And please attend, uh, Select Board meetings as the process rolls on, so you can get more information.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Peter Diamond, 84 Seccong Street. Uh, the 20 years, what happens at the end of 20 years with all the equipment that's installed? Will the town take possession of it? Ownership?
Whoever, Mr. Lutz, looks like you're ready to talk about that, or if anyone else wants to?
I'm happy to talk about it, unless, uh, usually the agreements allow the town to buy the system for a nominal price. Um, if it's still producing, uh, the current projections are it's about a 0.5% loss on an annual basis, so it'd be down about 10% in terms of its overall production in 20 years. If it's still operating at that level, the town may be interested in buying it. If not, it can be, uh, built into the agreement that it's removed at that point.
Thank you.
Ms. Robinson, how'd Mr. Lutz do on that?
Mr. Moderator, he did wonderfully.
Excellent. I will also point out that if and when these, um, facilities do, um, not become useful, the town has additional agreements to ensure that they're decommissioned. You didn't say it well enough, so, yeah. Uh, he knows I love him. Article Eleven, oh, wait. Yep, we'll take a vote on that. Any questions, further questions, comments on Article Ten? Seeing none. This also requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed say no? It passes. Article Eleven is a zoning amendment. Ms. Katz?
Uh, Mr. Moderator, uh, we move, I move to have the town vote to amend its zoning bylaw, Section D5 floodplain wetlands protection district, as included in the document entitled, November 9th, 2021, Special Town Meeting Warrant, Article Number 11, Proposed Zoning Bylaw, Section D5 Floodplain Wetlands Protection District, which is available on the town's website for inspection, or, or to take any action in relation thereto.
Is there a second? Is there an explanation from advisory?
Um, Article 11 is a change to the floodplain bylaw. In order to be in compliance with state and federal law, we have to change the bylaw. The Advisory Committee unanimously approves Article 11.
And there was a handout, too, available in the hallway, if you missed all this, on the website as well. Uh, Mr. Byron, how's the, uh, Planning Board doing on this one? Why don't you come down and give us their report?
Failed to give my name and address last time, so Walter Byron.
Fine.
80 Fruit Street, and, uh, the Chair of the Planning Board. Um, as the Advisory Board stated, this is a requirement that we change our by, uh, bylaw to comply with some new federal requirements. Um, the town planner has, uh, notified, uh, 120 property owners who would be affected, uh, by this change, of which, uh, approximately 30, 31, I think, uh, actually have structures on land that are now covered by this new floodplain, uh, requirement. Uh, and the, the key really is that if we don't adopt it, the federal requirements, those people who have, uh, flood insurance, uh, federal flood insurance will not be available to them anymore. So it's really important that this, uh, change be adopted.
Thank you, Mr. Byron. So the Planning Board obviously recommends passage.
Ed, the Planning Board recommends adoption, yes.
Mr. Rosenberg?
Um, I, I appreciate that handout. I was hoping that, um, someone could give me a summary of the effect of the changes, if possible.
Good evening. Richard McCarthy, Norfolk Town Planner. What, uh, some of the changes are, there was a model bylaw that was put out by the state, by which we took and sent that to the Department of Conservation and Recreation, and evaluate our existing bylaw. We blended the two together. They wanted to add, they, some deficiencies, not deficiencies, but we had a very good bylaw in this place. However, we had some different standards, in terms of the purpose of why we wanna have a floodplain bylaw, protection of structures, uh, loss of value and so forth, which you could read, uh, in the bylaw. Another provision by which was added to the bylaw, which is newer, was that they want us to, uh, monitor structures, in terms, fences and sheds, and, and even so much as if somebody were to pave their driveway within a floodplain. That's, that is a newer requirement. Um, we did explore whether we could avoid this provision. Unfortunately, they said no. Um, it's something that we do need to, uh, have at the local level, so, one of the changes is that the floodplain bylaw will be administered through the position, the Conservation Agent. Conservation Agent, as you know, is intimately involved with projects that are within the floodplain jurisdictional, uh, resource area, so that, through that office. It's, it's through the office, it's not through the commission. It's through the office, it's not through the commission. If somebody does need a permit, they would need to get that. Another thing we do regulate in terms of placement of RV vehicles, but for the most part, there is not, although you saw in the handout, there was a map change in there. That map change did not affect the town of Norfolk, it affected one of the communities within Norfolk County. As we put out, there will be upcoming changes to the floodplain bylaw coming forward for the end of the year, for next spring. We'll again bring that to town meeting, we'll send those letters out to residents so they can evaluate and see whether or not their property is in a floodplain or not. But for the most part, there wasn't any significant changes in terms of what we had already, except for what I mentioned previously about that permit provision.
Thank you.
Hi, Deborah Omar, 24 Merrill Lake Ave. I was one of the recipients of those letters the other day. And I know that when I purchased my home, I wasn't required to get flood insurance. I don't know how this is going to affect me, and I'm kind of surprised that it's the first I'm hearing about changing things. I just don't know if you discussed it with any of the residents that it actually affected prior to the warrant, and whether it will affect me as far as, am I going to now be required to get flood insurance? Do you understand what my questions are?
What I think the changes do is still make the flood insurance program available to you to get flood insurance. Now, if you are, if you have a mortgage, they will require that.
They did not.
If you are in a floodplain, so generally, but again, it just makes flood insurance available to you. If Mr. McCarthy has, I don't know your property in particular, so I don't know how this bylaw affects you or why you got the letter, but it doesn't, this bylaw doesn't require you to get any kind of insurance.
And that's why I'm asking, because I know it was a big issue at the time that I did get my, buy my home.
We pass the, town passes these bylaws to make sure that if you need flood insurance, you can get it. If we don't have this bylaw in place, your ability to obtain flood insurance, federal flood insurance is affected.
But it also sounds like it's putting a lot of restrictions on what I can do with my own property.
I can't, I don't know your property, so I can't speak to that, and I think that's a conversation you may have to have with Mr. McCarthy, but it, these bylaws do have some effect on future building or expansions of some property.
And that's why I'm asking the question, because this, like I said, this is the first I heard of this was last week.
So, Mr. McCarthy, if you have anything to add to that, I mean, obviously you may not be able to describe what impacts her property.
In terms of, this bylaw does not require you to get floodplain insurance. So there, as I mentioned, there is no change to the floodplain map at this time. If your property isn't within the floodplain, well, if there aren't structures within the floodplain, really, there are properties that we sent letters to that are within the floodplain, but we wanted to be broader in terms of making people aware of it. So again, if the structure's not within the floodplain, you don't need to get flood insurance, so we're not telling you to get floodplain insurance. However, if, if down the road, which a future map is coming, if your property's within the floodplain, if we don't have this, you would have to get floodplain insurance through a private carrier versus through FEMA, which is significantly less of a cost than compared to a private carrier for that same insurance.
Thank you. And to the extent that your property may be affected by this, then perhaps town officials can help answer your questions at some point. The bylaw's the bylaw. If you've had the property and your property existed well in advance of the bylaw, there's nothing affirmative happening, but obviously...
No, you can certainly contact me. I've talked to about a half dozen people about it. When I sent the letter out, we went over with the maps and went through each individual property, talked it through, so.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy.
I understood what my question was, basically, because it seems like, I don't know if you talked back there. It just appears that it's going to affect certain individuals, and the idea that, I really didn't hear about it prior to last week, and, you know, it's already on time, town meeting warrant, just, that's why I'm asking the question.
There are public hearings, and I can't speak to any of the, any of the notices of those public hearings, but there are required public hearings. Ms. Klein, did you have a comment?
Hi.
Ms. Klein, if you want to talk, or if you want to have a side conversation, you can do that too, but...
The advisory, the advisory board discussed this in great detail, and the meetings are available on YouTube. So if anybody else, including yourself, has any questions, we went over the floodplain, we went over the fact that you need an insurance, which homes were going to be affected, what the percentages were, how many homes were going to be affected. So that, all of those documents are attached to the agenda for that meeting on the advisory board's website, which is on the town website.
So should I monitor the website regularly?
It's not really that you need...
Because I'm never informed of any of these.
Honestly, it would be great, it would be lovely, if everybody paid attention to the warrant that's coming out, and the way that you can do that is about two months before a town meeting, so starting in September, and then starting in March for spring, and September for fall. The advisory board, whose, all of their meetings are recorded and available online, you don't actually have to attend them, you can see what's coming up on the warrant, and we ask all of these same questions. So we asked how many residents are going to be affected, where are they? We looked at a map, we talked about the insurance, and I know that a lot of people don't know that. So if you have any questions, you can still go back and view those, they're there forever, and we post an agenda, and you can see what's coming up, so you'll know what we're going to be discussing each week.
Yeah, and just, my point is, is the fact that I didn't have any warning before last week that this was going on to begin with. Thank you for your...
Further questions, comments on Article 11? Seeing none. Zoning changes require a two-thirds vote. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Article 12, also a zoning amendment. Mr. Hurwitz.
Mr. Moderator, I move to amend the zoning bylaw at section F982, sign regulations as printed in the warrant.
Is there a second? Explanation from advisory.
Yeah, the advisory committee recommends approval of this article. The town's current zoning bylaws prevent any usage of internally lit signage. Currently, externally illuminated signs are allowable, for example, a storefront sign illuminated from an external light source such as a spotlight. Internally lit signage examples include backlit signs or LCD displays. If approved, this article would allow an exception for the town of Norfolk to utilize internally lit signage for purposes of providing information regarding town events and announcements. This article does not authorize the purchase or funding for any such sign at this point in time, rather only creates the zoning exception to allow for future usage by the town. This article will not change any signage zoning for any business or private entity. Approval for this article passed within advisory with a five to four vote in favor.
Mr. Byron, can we hear the planning board's side of this, please?
The planning board approved this, recommended approval of this bylaw change after conversation, which included understanding that the bylaw change was really desired to get the conversation going about this particular change, and the use of illuminated signs by the town. If the bylaw is passed, any sign that is proposed to be used by the town would in fact come before the planning board for approval, and I dare say that if, if this bylaw does pass, the planning board probably will be back with a recommended amendment to it in the fall to cover such things as the color, the size, the location, where it can be placed, et cetera. We think that, that it is appropriate to allow the town to put up a sign and pass information that will benefit the citizens of the town, so simply, simply that.
Thank you, Mr. Byron. Mr. Lutz.
Hi, my name's Dave Lutz, 15 Pondview Road. In full disclosure, I was one of the no votes for the advisory committee. So in the form of a question to Mr. Byron and perhaps the town administrator, was there any consideration for an amendment to the bylaw to allow these kinds of signs for private and public entities? And if this is to start a conversation and everything else would have to come back at a future date, why not just bring us back a full plan, including an analysis of the signed bylaw on whether or not this should be allowed for everyone in town who may need to post a sign, commercial entities, retail entities, and the public entities?
So I'm going to take that as generally a rhetorical question and more of a comment. I don't think we need to, what's before us is this article, and I'm less interested in how the sausage was made. So I understand the objection and your request that they do something in the future, but how they got here is less important to me. Mr. Rosenberg.
Thank you. I'm, I've seen at the roundabouts in town movable signs, one soliciting snow truck, snowplow drivers, and others about town meetings, I think, or something. So I'm confused about whether those signs that I've seen in town were in violation of the existing bylaw, or how those signs, what the relationship is between movable signs put up, movable illuminated signs that the town is currently using and this bylaw.
I think that the question I'm interested in having answered rather than were they a violation, are those the types of signs that are going, that are included within this definition? Mr. Byron, or anyone else that can answer this? Mr. McCarthy? Or are there some other kinds of signs? But we've seen those signs, so...
Those signs are covered under DPW regulations, and, and I don't believe that is the exact type of sign that the town administrator is proposing to use. For those of you who may have gone up Route 109, there is a sign put there by the town of Medway for their purpose of communicating to their citizens, and it's a small sign, and I think it's blue background with white letters, more of a permanent location than it is a movable sign. But the movable signs are really covered under the DPW.
Thank you very much for that clarification, and thank you for the question, too, Mr. Rosenberg. Mr. Garrity, it's good to see you at town meeting. Do you have a question or a comment?
Rob Garrity, Boardman Street. So I actually, I rise with a comment. I rise in opposition of this, and I'm always suspicious of a bylaw that comes in front of you saying, this is just to get the conversation started, we'll show you later what the sign will look like. If we want a sign, let's see what the sign is going to look like up front, because we're not going to allow our businesses to do this, and that's a little bit obnoxious. It's okay for the town, but a business can't do it. And I'll bet you, you wouldn't want all the businesses to do it, so why should we have the town do it? You have the ability to put out VMS boards if there's really something we need to say. We don't need to sign up all the time. I don't think that's what we wanted when we created the B1 like we did. We don't want flashy signs up all the time. So, in any case, I would ask you to vote no on this tonight, so if they're really serious about wanting this, come back with renderings and drawings, let's see what it looks like, then we'll deal with the zoning bylaw. Thank you.
Yep, yep, let's hold that applause there. I know that everyone's happy to see Mr. Garrity, but let's...
When I'm more of a moderator, I don't think we're allowed to mock people.
No mocking. Mr. Hadad.
Mr. Moderator, seeing that the vote with the advisory committee was five to four, I wonder would it be possible to hear one of the dissenting, dissension votes, maybe what the argument would have been against this vote, that we might also...
I don't, I don't call for that. We did hear from one member who expressed his opinion. All I, all town meeting, from my perspective, as long as we have that final vote, we did hear voluntarily one of those comments from one of the dissenting members. If any of them, the others want to comment, I'm sure they would, but I think you got a flavor for it anyway.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Byron.
There really was no discussion, to the question that was raised earlier, no discussion about allowing this type of sign for businesses when we were discussing whether we should approve this, recommend approval of this bylaw or not. However, the planning board is certainly willing to entertain changes to the sign regulations, which are at least 35 years old at this point, and if the business community were to come forward and say, we propose that we have signs type X, Y, and Z of these sizes and these colors, et cetera, et cetera, we would entertain that for a discussion at the planning board. Secondly, any sign that the town would propose would also require presence in front of the planning board to answer the exact questions that were raised a moment ago, what color, what size, you know, where's it going to be placed, et cetera, et cetera. So there is some control over what, what would be proposed and actually put in place.
Thank you, Mr. Byron. Mr. Bullock, you have some information that we can't get from some other source here?
Well, I'm the one who wrote the bylaw, so I just figured I'd come up and just explain that one of the things that came about with this, it's actually been talked about for a number of years, about doing this, possibly putting a sign up on Town Hill between the two roundabouts, so that people that aren't on social media or aren't on the town webpage would understand what's, what's actually going on in town, kind of like the 150th celebration. There's some people that didn't know anything about it if they weren't seeing some of the handposted signs up. So this is just a way of the town being able to, you know, put out messages, whether they're trying to hire someone for the DPW for snow removal, or for to put a, you know, the next celebration in the town, or different events that are going on. So, you know, they can be done tastefully. These are like big TVs that we're just putting out, that, you know, we're going to have to design and come up with a design for it, but all this would have to go through a special permit process. And through that special permit process, they could decide whether or not they want flashing lights, or just a regular sign that just says, this is the event that's going on, nothing too flashy that, you know, people would be upset about. It would be something that the special permit process could control, so, okay?
Thank you, Bob. Mr. Weeder.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. To echo Mr. Garrity, you know, the business community for years has been asking us to update the signage bylaw. This is just not even a Band-Aid. It actually negates everything the business community has asked about signage bylaws. Instead of just yielding this to the government, we should go back, do this properly, review our signage bylaws, and pass a bylaw that works for everybody if we're going to do it. Since I've been sat on the zoning board for 12 years, the worst kind of zoning article is one that is so specific that it only benefits one particular group. And to show you how bad this is, our bylaw is currently is, if you look at our MBTA, there is actually an internally lit revolving electronic sign. And if you look around the rest of our town, there are electronically lit signs internally from our million-dollar jackpots to open signs everywhere. The signage bylaw is just inadequate, it's antiquated, it doesn't meet the current environment, it certainly is not consistent with what our business owners have asked. We talk about business groups, we have Friday at Town Hill, our select board promotes business, but yet we've done nothing in this article to help the business community. Let's go back, redo the signage bylaw, which has been asked for years, and do a comprehensive bylaw that benefits everybody or doesn't benefit anybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weeder. Mr. Rosenberg.
Thinking about Mr. Byron's comment, I realize that I don't understand the relationship between DPW regulations and town bylaws. I, I was left with the impression that DPW regulations could do things that the bylaws say can't be done, and I was hoping somebody could help explain to me the interaction between the DPW regulations and the town bylaws.
If Mr. McCarthy might be willing to tell us why DPW signs are a different animal under our zoning bylaws or are treated differently, that would be helpful to answer this question.
Okay, so just amongst us folks here, all right, it probably shouldn't be advertised and hired for DPW employees on that sign, all right?
That wasn't the question I asked. I just want to know...
That was a question he asked earlier.
Well, I just want to know why they're allowed...
They can use them in terms of regulatory and visory for traffic.
Under what authority is it a difference?
Under the sign bylaw.
It's a different designation under our zoning bylaw?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. They have a different section under the zoning bylaw, David. They have a different section under the zoning bylaw, David. Any further questions, comments on Article 12, a signed bylaw change? This requires a two-thirds vote as well? I think it may be close. All those in favor of passage, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Okay, let's do this. Let's just go, I want to do a standing. All those in favor, stand up, please. All those opposed, stand up. Thank you, you may be seated. The article clearly has a majority opposed and does not pass the two-thirds to pass. Article 13 is a zoning amendment. Mr. Lutz.
Mr. Moderator, I move to amend general bylaws, Article 7, Land Use and Resource Protection, Section 7, post-construction stormwater management of new developments and redevelopments, 102307, as included in the document entitled, November 9, 2021, Special Town Meeting Warrant, Article Number 13, General Bylaws, Article 7, Land Use and Resource Protection, Section 7, as included in the handout.
Thank you, Mr. Lutz. Is there a second? Thank you for the second. Is there an explanation from advisory?
Article 13 makes a number of changes to the town's stormwater management bylaw. Norfolk is required under federal and state law to manage the collection, sorry, collection, treatment, and discharge of stormwater on public lands in the town. These changes included in this bylaw would ensure that the town complies with its current MS-IV permit issued by the Federal Environmental Protection Agency. Updates to the bylaw include requirements that new developments in town meet a higher standard of treatment for stormwater before it is charged, discharged into the state's, the town's stormwater system. In addition, maintenance and repairs of current public and private systems would require increased pollutant control as part of the improvements. The advisory committee believes that these changes are important, both to comply with our federal permit and to ensure that we continue to improve our management of stormwater runoff.
Thank you. Can we hear from the planning board on this? Mr. Byron.
Like the advisory board, the planning board recommends adoption of this article, and perhaps if further explanation is needed, Mr. McCarthy, or someone from the DPW could add additional information.
Mr. McCarthy, why don't you give us the, or come on up and give us the skinny on this one?
Absolutely. Hello, it's Barry Lirvy, our Assistant DPW Director, town in Norfolk. So what it is, is we're currently under MS-IV permit, which is multiple separate stormwater systems. So the federal government and EPA has set requirements that we must meet for the next four years. This bylaw was supposed to be in at the spring town meeting. Due to the restriction with COVID and everything that was going on, we weren't able to put this together. One of the key points of this is Norfolk is within the Charles River Basin. That was deemed a high phosphorus load basin, so we have a TMDL that we need to meet. So we need to reduce our overall phosphorus production in Norfolk by 23 percent. So this bylaw, excuse me, goes a long way to allow us to meet those goals.
Mr. Rosenberg.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So I understood from the last comment the objectives of this bylaw. I hope somebody can give me a summary of what changes the bylaw makes in order to meet those objectives.
And how perhaps it may impact folks who are affected by this? If we have any kind of summary of what the changes generally are and how they may get implemented? There is a handout for this one that was available on the website and is available, was available on the table as well.
Well, the good news is, is our existing bylaws were pretty stringent compared to the communities around us. So a lot of the changes in this, in the, in the new bylaw really don't affect a lot of things. There is some more pre and post-development runoff standards that we have to meet. The biggest change in here is, like I stated before, is aiming at the phosphorus reduction. So in the existing bylaw, a lot of the phosphorus removal wasn't taken into consideration. Now we have to look at phosphorus reduction through structural and nonstructural best management practices. So this is for residential, commercial, as well as a town to adhere to.
And, and it gets implemented when, I believe, new development, as defined under the bylaw, is proposed and these standards kick in?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Further questions, comments on Article 13? Again, one of those mandates that come down from above. Seeing none, again, a zoning bylaw requires two-thirds votes, two-thirds vote to pass. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no? It passes unanimously. Do I have a motion? Has been a motion to adjourn second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much, have a good evening, we will see you all soon.